Janet Ball is one of our office specialists and Janet takes an awful lot of calls on a daily basis about trees and she's taken minutes here for us today. And then Jerry Shorni, our Assistant Director of Park Operations, is here as well. What we want to do this afternoon is kind of give you a status update on our EAB response and recovery planning efforts. And we're going old school this afternoon and we're using paper instead of powerpoint.
Where's John when we need him?
And at the end of this, what we are working towards is a written EAB response and recovery plan. And we would like that go through a community engagement process and have that planned before the City Council later this year and we can talk about the schedule kind of at the end of the meeting here. Kind of a quick update, I think as everybody knows Emerald Ashford was identified in Omaha and Greenwood last year. There have not been any additional locations in Nebraska where Emerald Ashford has been identified yet at this point. That certainly doesn't mean that it's not here. In fact, we're pretty sure that it is here. If you look at the next sheet in your handout, this is what they call the EAB death curve. And what they say is that typically Emerald Ashford isn't identified in a community until it's been there for three or four years. And by that point, it's established enough population, but then it really starts to grow exponentially. And you'll probably remember that within 15 years from the time that Emerald Ashford moves into a community, essentially 100% of the unprotected ash trees will be dead. So we're not there yet. We anticipate that it is in Lincoln and that we're working forward as if it is here. We recently completed, we had a consultant come in and do a physical inventory of all of our public trees in Lincoln. And they looked at locations, tree species, and size. And we have all of those trees mapped at this point and we also have a database so that we can query that database and get information about it. As we move forward into Beehive and the asset management system, this will be key to our ability to utilize that system. There's actually a few less street trees than we thought. There's about 76,000 street trees. Almost 12,000 of those are ash, just about 300 less than we thought. And about, actually more park trees than we anticipated. There's almost 29,000 park trees and about 1,600 of those are ash trees and again slightly less than we thought. So the good news is we've got a few less trees than we anticipated. One of the things that the system has allowed us to do is look at the size distribution of our ash trees. And if you look at the third handout, there is a bar graph that shows the distribution of the size of the ash trees. And this is important for a couple of reasons. One is, and probably the most important one, is that the size of the tree directly impacts how long it takes to remove a tree and therefore impacts the cost. And you can see the bar chart there unfortunately doesn't, it's kind of whited out on one edge a little bit. But the vast majority of our ash trees are in that seven to 12 inch range and then in the 13 to 18 inch range. So they're smaller trees although we do have some very large ash trees in Nebraska, pardon me, in Lincoln. And then the size distribution is similar in parks as well. So the good news is that a majority of our ash trees are kind of the smaller size of these, right, size range.
And as far as accessibility of those trees, since most of them are street trees, that means you can come right up there and take them there?
You can, yeah.
So is there, can you, do you have the differential in cost between a street tree and a tree in the middle of a park or something like that?
It'd be about the same. It's accessibility, as you pointed out, that's going to be the main concern for cost. And most of the park trees and the street trees are easily accessible. It'll be the private trees in the backyard is where the cost is going to be incurred.
In terms of a treatment strategy, I mean, that's one option is to treat some trees. So would it be advantageous to try to treat the larger trees or would those be the ones you try to get rid of? How do you make that decision?
As you notice on the graph, the largest line is seven to 12 inch. And that's what we're focused on right now primarily is that range of trees because that tree would have to be treated for another 70, 80 years, the life of the tree, which we don't anticipate that that will happen. We are removing trees of any size by request. And we're getting quite a few larger trees also, but we are concentrating mainly on the seven to 12 inch.
If you go to the next page, this is a heat map that shows the distribution of the ash trees in Lincoln. And not surprisingly, you can see that they're really primarily, the large ash trees are primarily in two locations. One is the Meadow Lane neighborhood, north and east of 7th and Vine Street. And the other is the Trendwood neighborhood, kind of Trendwood, Woodwood Lake neighborhood that is between O Street and A Street, east of 7th and Street. So we're going to spend a lot of time in those neighborhoods and, thanks Jamie, we're going to spend a lot of times in those neighborhoods in the future just because of the size of those trees. And then you can see kind of, we've got ash trees distributed well throughout Lincoln, but those are the two kind of hotspots in terms of the size of the trees that we're going to be dealing with. One of the things that we wanted to talk a little bit about, and Councilmember Rabel has come across this recently, is we've got a number of trees that actually straddled the property, like that a portion of the trunk or a portion of the trunk and root flare are actually on private property. And, you know, it could vary from a small percentage on the right of way to a large percentage on private property and vice versa. One of the things we want to do is some legal research as to who is actually responsible for that tree because we know that as we get into Emerald Ashford, we've got about 350 what are determined to be boundary trees where they sit on kind of that combination of public and private property. So we want to, go ahead Cindy.
Yeah, so is that like where we don't have a sidewalk or something where it's a street tree and that there's a question of?
A lot of places in Lincoln, the property boundary is actually someplace between three and four feet behind the sidewalk. And so it may be a tree that somebody planted in the front yard or there was a time that street trees were actually planted in the front yard instead of between the curb and sidewalk. So we see a whole combination of these, but we asked the company that did the inventory to try to get information on those trees that we called boundary trees. And overall, there's about, I think there's about, I wrote the number down. Total, we've got over 4,000 boundary trees and of those, about 351 are ash trees. And like I say, the intent we need to do is spend some time with the law department and have a good understanding of the legal structure within which we're working, who's responsible for those trees. And then we want to develop a written policy about how do we address trees where the tree sits on both public and private property. Okay, we'll step into kind of some thoughts about our EAB response planning. One of the things that, one of our goals has been that we want to preserve the public tree canopy over time. As we go through this process of removal and replacement, we're going to go through a period that we've actually decreased the public tree canopy because the trees will be smaller for a period of time. But then as they grow, hopefully the tree canopy then will recover. And the other thing that we want to make sure that we do is that we are increasing our diversity of tree species. Our goal is to not have any more than 10% of our tree population be made up by any one tree species. And that way, in the future, the next, whatever insect or disease that comes through, we kind of minimize our exposure. And actually, one of the other benefits of having our inventory completed is we can now tell you what our tree species distribution looks like on a percentage basis. And it really helps guide us in making decisions about what trees are we going to be planting in the future. The other thing that seems a bit counterintuitive is that the preference is to take down live trees. Ash trees, as they die and as they dry out, they become very unpredictable and very dangerous to work with. They also, they're also messy and it takes longer to remove a dead tree than it does a live tree because the ash trees, as they're dry, as they come down, they just shatter. And so there's a lot of kind of cleanup and work associated with working with those dead trees. And so even though it's counterintuitive, our preference is to be working with live green trees from a kind of an efficiency standpoint. I thought I might mention just a little bit about kind of the differences between Lincoln and Omaha because we have a similar number, a very similar number of public ash trees, but the two cities' approach managing their urban forestry or their urban forest is very different. In Lincoln, by ordinance, the city is responsible for maintenance of the public trees. In Omaha, the adjoining property owner is responsible for maintenance of the trees. So the approach that Omaha has is they have four inspectors. They go out and on an annual basis, they inspect all of their trees and they identify those that are in poor condition or hazardous. And then they take those trees down. They don't have a replanning effort. Lincoln does have a replanning effort. In Lincoln, our plan includes going in and grinding the stump out. And in Omaha, they're leaving the stumps in place. So they're very different approaches. The other thing that Omaha is doing that we are not doing is they, like Lincoln, will issue a no cost permit to plant a tree in the public right of way, but they don't provide any direction as to what type of tree it is. So they won't have any control over kind of what their tree species diversity is in the future. And so Lincoln's approach is very different and actually it's more costly. And when you hear that Lincoln's program is about twice that of Omaha, part of the reason is is that we're going to be removing the stumps and the other is that we are proposing to actually replace the trees so that we maintain our tree canopy. Our proposed approach is that, as I said, we want to go in and with the exception of trees that have either have been adopted by private property owners or by the city, we want to go in and on a kind of a planned process, remove and replace all of those public ash trees. The intent, Carl asked about treatment, and our goal in using treatment is to stretch the death curve out because as I said, we'd prefer to deal with live trees rather than dead trees. And we also want to make sure that we can control the death curve as opposed to the insect controlling the death curve. Because the last thing we want to have happen is have a lot of standing dead ash trees all over Lincoln because they tend to be very, very dangerous as they dry out. And so what we are doing at this point is we are gearing up and staffing up over a three-year period. This year, we started with purchasing the equipment that we use to go in and trim and top out the tops of the trees and then hire the staff that will staff that equipment. Next year, we'll hire the, purchase the equipment and hire the staff to do the stump grinding and then backfilling of the holes. And then the third year, actually in 2018, 19, we'll be going in and purchasing the equipment and hiring the staff who will actually be removing the trunk. And so it'll take us three years because of funding to get to the point that we have an entire team in place, excuse me, to be removing ash trees. We're certainly doing some now, but the way that we're doing it now is that we're taking resources away from other tree maintenance activities in order to work on our ash trees right now. The intent is to have a dedicated team in the future. Right now, we don't have a specific wood waste management plan. One of the things about Nebraska is that there is not a very robust timber industry in the state. And so there aren't a lot of sawmills and there isn't a lot of kind of private sector resources to cut up and mill the lumber. That may grow as we get into this. There's actually a proposal from the state legislature to do a study to look at the opportunities to kind of utilize ash wood and we plan to participate in that. Right now, if you asked us what our plan is, we would be hauling the ash trees to Hoping Enterprises and perhaps one or two other places where they'd be grinding the ash trees into mulch and then they'll be used for landscape and industrial applications, which much better than them going into landfill, but it's not putting them into, we're not creating lumber out of them that way. But we do want to participate in that study. Another sheet that you have in your packet is actually a table that is our anticipated spending plan or the anticipated cost. And we've updated this table based on a couple of things. It's been updated based on the street tree inventory, so we now know that we have 13,306 public ash trees. We've also made an assumption that we wouldn't start treating until year five because even if Emerald Ashford was identified next year, that gives us a few years where you can wait a couple of years before you have to start treating and still be able to keep the tree alive. It may not be in great condition, but at least it's still alive. And so we've deferred that cost. The other thing that we've built in here is the assumption, and we don't know what this number is going to be, but we made the assumption that perhaps 5% of our trees will be adopted either by private citizens or the city will identify some high value ash trees we want to preserve. So there's 650 trees identified for kind of long-term preservation. When you get clear down to the bottom line, you'll remember that we used to have about a $29 million cost. Because of the changes, reducing the number of trees and delaying treatment primarily, it's now about a $25 million cost. And the other thing I think that is, or should be of interest is this is broken up by biennium and in the next biennium, if we were to fully fund the EAB response and recovery plan, we'd be at about $2.8 million for the biennium. And then after that, it's about $4 million per biennium. And so that gives you some sense of kind of financially, what are we looking at moving forward? What's the cost going to be to the city? You'll probably remember that we budgeted $1.9 million for the current biennium, $950,000 a year. And we've spent a vast majority of that $950,000 has been spent this year. I may pause there in case there are questions because I know that's a lot of information and it's a lot of numbers, but I did want to get, or we did want to get this spreadsheet in your hands so that you can see kind of what the estimates. There's a couple of other additional assumptions that are built into this spreadsheet. We don't have a cost in here for disposal or for processing of the wood waste. And so right now, that cost is estimated at zero and we did not include boundary trees in here. So those 351 boundary trees are not identified in this plan either at this point, but it's a, that is a relatively small number comparatively. But I think probably the big takeaway is that it's about a $25 million expense over about a 15-year period. And when we really get into this, we're going to be spending about $2 million a year to stay ahead of the plan. And we've got to identify a funding strategy, obviously. I think with that, one of the other things we wanted to talk a bit about is City Council was interested in a comparison of what does it cost for city staff to take down a tree versus what does it cost for private sector to take down a tree? And there is a handout right after the financial table that we looked at where Bob and his staff actually did a time study. And they found that the cost for the city staff to remove an ash tree, seven to 12 inches in diameter, is just about $23. And the comparable private sector bid price is about $88. So we're doing this at just about a quarter of the cost of the private sector. The other thing that, whenever we've been to a conference, whenever we've talked with people who have dealt with Emerald Ashford and their community, that they've said is that this becomes supply and demand very quickly, that when Emerald Ashford moves into a community and you've got a lot of dead trees, the cost for tree removal goes up. And so one of the advantages, I guess there's two advantages of doing the tree removal work in-house. One, we can control the cost. Second, we think that where we've demonstrated that the cause, we can do this at least as cost effectively as the private sector can. And the other thing that we know from when we have contracted for landscape-related services in the past is that we tend to get relegated to a lower priority status. And so we'd prefer to be kind of managing tree removal on our timeframe as opposed to competing with work that a private contractor might have, private work to get the work done. And again, I'll be happy to pause here and either Bob or Lori can both answer any questions you might have here.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out today. So I love to hear that we're going to diversify the canopy because I know that was a big message that I came away from that conference with from everywhere. They just said, hey, you just can't have this kind of thing happening over and over again. So I appreciate that. My question has to do with that because we were talking now about our staff removing the trees. What about the planting? Is that going to be outsourced? Is that something we're going to do inside, in-house? And then my other question has to do with as the, as we hit the exponential part of the curve and we start seeing a lot more trees, once that tapers off, are we going to have personnel that we've hired that we're going to keep on? Or are we looking at this as kind of saying, hey, this is for this particular event and so it's going to be a three or four year, whatever, engagement type of thing?
Two great questions, Cindy. Right now, our strategy for planting replacement trees is that we'll put out bids and it'll be done by the private sector. And one of the things that's happening nationally is that the cost of trees is going up. There's kind of two factors that have played into that. When the Great Recession happened in the late 2000s, there were a lot of nurseries that ended up with trees standing in their nurseries they couldn't sell because economically people weren't buying trees at that point. So they scaled back on the number of trees. And now nationally, everybody's doing what we're about to do, which is plant a whole lot of trees. And so there isn't enough availability in trees and so the price is going up. When we get into the treatment phase, we also plan to do that contractually and privately as well. And that'll happen in probably May and April and May, or May and June of every year. The question about what do we do when we get to the end of this? Because we've got an additional crew, or we've got an additional team that we've assembled. I think you all probably know that we have, we continue to add trees to our inventory, public trees to our inventory every year, but we have not added staff. Right now, our pruning cycle is beyond 20 years. And ideally, our pruning cycle should be at about, ideally 10 to 12 years. And so we'd love to propose as we move forward that we retain at least a portion of that staff to help address the issue that our pruning cycle has gotten beyond where it should be. We're, right now, we do not have a proactive, regular, routine pruning program. We're doing it primarily on a complaint basis or a complaint or a request basis. And we need to get back to the point that we have a more planned pruning, trimming cycle to our trees.
John?
By the way, I appreciate all this information, but I'm puzzled at how you think in-house we can remove a tree for $22.62. I mean, if you're, I assume you've got to have a two-man crew, two-person crew, the equipment?
I'm going to let Bob talk about that.
Can you help me understand that, please?
Okay, we had two crews out there. And one of them was, well, two full-timers and two paratecs. The paratecs are at the bottom. It says paratec time study.
Yes.
So we used three paratecs and five full-timers. And we took the bid off of the contract price, which was the 88.30. And that bid price did not include stump removal and that's why we used it. If we had put stump removal onto our 22.62, it would have been more, but we didn't use stump removal in the contract bid. Okay, the contract bid was 88.62 for a seven to 12 inch tree. We just sent our crews out here. The unit is the vehicles that they used. The start is the hours on the unit, the end is, and then the usage and the rate that the equipment was used at, that's all on the top line there. And then I think we added 33% overhead, 33% overhead to cover our costs.
And then we divided by the number of trees that were taken down that day and that was how we got to the 22.62 per tree.
And that includes hauling away and everything?
That was, that was everything.
Okay. Learyn?
I have just some questions about the overall cost over the 15-year period. At one point during the budget, we had an estimate that was $29 million over 15 years. And now the presentation mentions 27 million and then the chart says 25 million. Is the differential, well, I've looked at about the 29 to 27, how that, how that got reduced? So if 25 to 27 differential, is this, the removal or is it doing something with the ash once it's taken down? You mentioned that those costs weren't broken out.
Yeah, those costs are not in here. We've actually been looking at costs a couple of times this summer. One is, at one point in the summer, we were still planning on about 14,000 ash trees and we had adjusted for when we thought we might have to start treatment. And it was that calculation that got us to the 27 million. And then most recently, we had the inventory completed and we now know that we're about 13,000 trees and that we would be preserving about, or projecting that we would be preserving about 650 of those trees. And so it was the reduction in the number of trees that actually took it then from 27 million to 25 million.
Because the cost to remove about 1,000 trees is about 1.2 to, oh, to 2 million in a year?
It is, yeah, yeah. And it's, and the reason that there's some variability in the cost is in the year that you do treatment, it drives the cost up. And so we would do treatment on a two-year cycle.
And then from 27 to 25, is that, are you estimating 2 million for removing, doing something with the wood once it's going to cut down?
We, that differential was really going from, at one point, the 14,000 that we had estimated that we had and then taking it down now to the 13,301. And then, and also estimating that 650 trees will be preserved over time. So it reduced the number of trees that we would be removing.
We're almost out of time for this. Do you have more you want to discuss?
Just a kind of a real quick wrap-up if it's okay. The, under, there, number six, there is a list of the neighborhoods that we've been working with and there's also a map of those locations. You can, you'll be able to see when you look at that, that we've been working all over Lincoln at this point. And as Bob said, we've been working primarily with the smaller trees at this point. It's been entirely on a voluntary basis. Number seven is an outline of our written EAB response and recovery plan. And then probably one of the things we did want to spend just a little bit of time on is the review and adoption process. Today, obviously, we're doing the update with the City Council. On September 12th, we plan to have a draft of the response and recovery plan to the Community Forestry Advisory Board for their initial review. And then on September 14th, we would be, we're proposing to have a news conference where we would let the community know that the draft plan is available for review and we would be starting a 30-day comment period. The week of October 9th, we do a public open house where people could come in and ask questions and get information and provide us with guidance and suggestions. And then on October 24th, the Community Forestry Advisory Board would be having a special meeting and it would be their opportunity for their final review and their recommendation to the City Council regarding adoption of the plan. We'd be introducing the plan and there's a related code amendment that goes with the plan. We'd be introducing that on November 6th and then public hearing in action on a resolution adopting- adopting the plan then would happen on November 13.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. We're out of time. Our next meeting starts in one minute according to our schedule. And so councilmembers have questions and encourage them to get with you and make yourselves available. Okay?
I need to get my public information done.